Want to get started?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting regularly scheduled for June 29th, 2015. The first item that we have is the signing of the warrant. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor. Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have approval of meeting minutes, June 15th, 2015, and June 17th, 2015. I don't know if you want to do it in one vote or two.
Why don't we break it out, just a slight modification, recommendation, Mr. Chairman. On page five.
Which one?
Relative, I'm sorry, to the June 15th.
June 15?
I'd like to modify the move and the motion I made.
Which number is it?
Page five.
I don't have a number.
No, I numbered them.
Oh, okay. All right, well, tell us what your numbering system is. Yep?
Relative to Milford Geriatric Authority, move, the motion that was made and seconded was to appoint Tara Cannelli for the three-year term expiring 6/30/18. I'd like to strike the words in front of that, which was, it's not a motion not to reappoint, but rather to appoint Tara Cannelli for a three-year term.
Okay, there's a motion made to amend the meeting minutes on page five to read that Mr. Buckley moved, seconded by Mr. Kincaid, to appoint Tara Cannelli for a three-year term to expire 6/30/18. Two in favor, one opposed. Does everybody want to read?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Meeting minutes of June 17th. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll move.
I have to abstain.
Okay. Motion made. I will second it. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor. Any opposed? Two in favor, and Mr. Kincaid will be abstaining on the June 17th meeting minutes. Invitation to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on any item? Not on the agenda? Don't all jump in at once now. Okay, hearing nothing, we will move on to our public hearings. The first item that we have is an application to transfer a retail package all-alcoholic license to Kuver Guru Corporation DBA West Street Liquors. We have our department head review form indicating that the building commissioner has said that it is a pre-existing legal, non-conforming use with no handicap accessibility. The town planner has indicated that there is no change of actual use. The tax collector and the town treasurer have both indicated there are no outstanding taxes, nor are there any tax liens on the property. The fire department has no issues at this time. The police chief has no issues or concerns. We have before us the application for retail alcoholic beverage license, which was completed by the new applicant and/or council, and gets submitted to the ABCC in addition to the town of Milford. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicants, and if I could just ask you to introduce yourself, everybody.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Joe Devlin. I'm an attorney for the Demarcus Law Offices in Lynn, Massachusetts. I represent Kuver Guru Corp. With me is Mukesh Kumar or Mike Patel. I'll slip back and forth between that. Also, his partner, Praveen Peter Patel, is behind him. He's the 40 percent stockholder. The Burnhams are also here in present, the sellers. If it pleases the Chair, I can summarize the transaction before you.
Absolutely, yes.
Vast majority of the purchase price is being paid for by a loan from Rockland Trust, which is why we need the pledge as well to secure the note. And same landlord, he got a new lease for five years with one five-year option. The rest of the money is coming from, a family friend is loaning them some of it, and then about $175,000, almost split evenly between Mike and Peter. Both of them are going to be working at the store. Mike's wife is also going to be working at the store. Both Mike and his wife, Mike's the proposed manager of record, are tip-certified. Mike's been running a retail store without liquor for the past 10 years that he owns in Hopkinton. Praveen is an owner of a package store as well, so he has experience. Both of them have multiple, multiple family members who they can also call on for experience if necessary, but Mike's been running a retail operation with no problem for a number of years. Other than that, they're not changing anything. Mike's been looking for a package store to purchase for probably the last two or three years, and so he's found one that he likes and that he feels is profitable and is not proposing on changing anything. Mr. Valani has explained to us that there's a special permit, that this is subject to a special permit. John Fernandez is actually, the seller's attorney, is handling this. I get highs when I get too close to zoning, so, and I believe that's on for July 16th.
I think it's the 16th. I know the petition has been filed, yes.
Yeah, it was filed on, on or about the 23rd. So this is obviously, we understand that this is conditioned upon approval of that. Other than that, we're here to answer any questions you might have.
You won't be hearing back from the ABCC before that anyway.
I don't think so.
That's fine. Yeah, no, everything looks in order. I'll just turn it over to the board. Bill?
I don't have any questions. Everything seems in order. I understand the legal issues in terms of the conformance and ZBA. No questions.
Will?
No questions here either. Good luck.
Boy, huh? Sailing through.
Rucked up.
Sailing through. Okay, it indicates it's going to continue to basically be essential to the same operations?
Correct.
Okay, good. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to vote to approve the transfer pending decision by ZBA, and also within that motion, make the motion for the pledge of license to Rockland Trust.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to transfer the license and also to pledge the license, subject to favorable zoning board action. Is there any further discussion? Not? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good job. Good luck. Yeah, yeah. It was, yeah, yeah.
Good luck. Congratulations. Good luck. Good to see you.
Good luck, sir. Good luck. We'll see you. We'll see you at the store.
Good luck with everything.
Good luck, sir.
Right. There you go. Good luck with everything.
Good luck. Good to see you again. See you, Peter. Take care, Mike.
Okay. Okay, good luck.
Good luck, sir.
All right, very good. Very happy transaction. All right, so let's see, we're all set on that. Next item that we have is Prezo Grill and Bar Inc., DBA Prezo Grill and Bar. It's a license hearing. Okay, what we have here is, just read the notice. Please take notice that the Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing pursuant to GL Chapter 138, Section 64, and other applicable law at 7:10 PM in Room 3, Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street, Milford, on June 29th, 2015. At which hearing, the Board of Selectmen will consider whether or not to modify, suspend, or revoke the license issued for your establishment pursuant to said Chapter 138. The reason for the contemplated action is that on May 29th, 2015, at or about 8:32 PM, an employee or agent of the establishment did sell alcohol beverage to a minor without any inquiry as to identification, all in violation of the laws of this Commonwealth and the rules and regulations relating to the sale of alcoholic beverage. With that, we have Lieutenant James Valby representing the Milford Police Department. And then, sir, if you could just introduce yourself, everyone.
I'm Oliveri from Prezo Grill and Bar.
Okay, and what's your capacity at Prezo's?
I'm the owner of the restaurant.
Okay, all right. What we're going to do is we'll hear from the police department. If you have any questions of the lieutenant, you certainly have a chance to do that. Once that's done, then I'll turn it over to you, and you can tell us anything that you think we ought to know. Okay? All righty. Jim?
Friday, May 29th, 2015, Detective Robert Pavia and Detective Carlos Souza conducted alcohol compliance checks. Forty-two businesses that are licensed to sell alcoholic beverages.
Nineteen-year-old female was used as undercover operative during the operation. At 8:32 PM, the undercover operative went into Prezo's restaurant at 229 and 1/2 East Main Street, ordered a Bud Light bottle. The bartender, who was later identified as Rachel Sassfield, served the alcoholic beverage without asking for identification, and the undercover operative paid $4.52 with a marked $20 bill, serial number GE796484, that she had received from the detectives. The bartender provided the undercover operative with $15.48 and change in Prezo's cash register receipt number 2605. The detectives then entered the premises, notified the manager, Jessica Benart, and she identified the bartender. Both Ms. Benart and Ms. Sassfield were apologetic for the violation. With the assistance of the manager, the detectives retrieved the marked $20 bill from the cash register. The detectives then advised the manager that he be receiving notice from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I do want to apologize for being here. I want you guys all to understand I take these allegations very seriously. I'm not going to dispute anything he said. Again, I want to apologize. I find it embarrassing to be here. Shed a little light on what I've, how, you know, what brought me into the restaurant business. Been doing this 25 years, 10 years in Milford as Prezo, going back 12 years as Peppercorns, and again, been in the restaurant business 25 years. Never in a million years would I ever think I'd be sitting on this chair. But I am, and I have to address it. So we're going to, as far as, I want you to understand how serious I take these allegations and the fact that I have my employee manual, that each and every employee signs, reads, and looks at. I have Rachel's signature, which she was an employee of mine for four and a half years. Rachel was probably my best employee. Worked for me, like I said, four and a half years. She was my lead waitress, worked her way up to the bar. To show you how serious I am about this, I fired her on the spot. I was, I had no other choice or option, because again, I want everyone to understand how serious I take these allegations. I actually thought that I put all the preventative measures in here to make sure this didn't happen, but obviously I didn't. So what have I done since? This is an issue that is talked about each and every day in my restaurants. Every day, people are told, and if you look at my manual, it says, anyone that's 35 years, looks 35 years or younger, they're to be carded. Unfortunately, in this business, I can't do all the carding. You guys are well aware how busy Prezo is. I'm not making any excuses. I was wrong. We were wrong. What I ask for is leniency. Hopefully, you guys know how I conduct business. I think you've all been into my restaurant on more than one occasion. You see the operation I run. I'm not there to attract young kids. It's not my nature. It's not a business I run. Plain and simple, a mistake was made. I will fess up to my mistake, and again, I ask for leniency. Would you like the manual?
That's okay. Why don't I turn it over to the board? Bill?
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, and I do know your restaurant. I do know some of your people there. I found it historically to be a well-run establishment. I don't have anything in front of me that indicates been any past issues. I don't recall any. And so, you know, it's unfortunate that that person lost their job. I understand you have to make business decisions, but I do get the impression that you take it seriously and...
Very serious.
You know, I don't have any comments relative to the hearing, but I would hope we use this as an educational opportunity.
Will?
Yeah, I mean, I can easily echo those statements. Again, it is unfortunate that Rachel lost her position. I've been in that position myself, and it's easy to get caught off guard or get wrapped up in a lot of what you do, and we're dealing with human beings. I also think that, and I think we spoke about this a little bit at the last meeting, that I think these, this operation and these operations should be used as a tool and as a test, but not necessarily have sometimes the level of punishment behind them. So I say that as a single member, but I do greatly appreciate your comments as well. Thanks for being here.
This is my 15th year on the Board of Selectmen, and I keep in my files all of the offenses that I have on all of the establishments, however small or large they might be. And that file right now is probably about that thick. What's not in that file is anything from Prezo's. When I got this notice, what does I do with all of them? I'll go into the file, look for the establishment, see what the history is. I couldn't find anything from Prezo's. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, you don't have any violations, because I look at these in accordance with the memos and the directives from the ABCC, that these are not to be punitive, these are educational. And that's why I'm disappointed to hear that you terminated your employee over it. And I understand that the seriousness that you took of it, but really, it's supposed to be an educational exercise. This is not part of an investigation where they have informants, where they believe something criminal's going on. It's a process. They go to all of the places. They're supposed to present it to you, and then you use it for information. What can you tighten up, you know? And, you know, maybe, you know, if that's something that you can reconsider and get your employee back, maybe just, you know, give her a warning or have her go to a class or something, but I really, it hurts me so much to hear that someone loses a job over something that the state agency themselves says shouldn't be punitive. So, you know, to me, you've got no history at all, and I say that, no negative history at all. Always been one of the, if not the best, restaurants in the town of Milford. Something we're proud to have here as an operation, and this really, to me, should be an opportunity for you to kind of just look over things. Hey, we slipped up here, something happened. But, you know, we've never had any hint of problem, not a complaint from a neighbor, nothing from the police. It's been a model operation. It's been a model operation. So this stuff happens, you know, and it's just a little informational situation for you to maybe tighten some things up, but, you know, it really, you know, if there's any way that you can reconsider the employee, I would strongly urge you to do that.
In all honesty, I was going to ask before I left if it was going in the right direction, that I would ask if you'd mind if I hired her back, so...
I would, I would, I would...
She would be hired back immediately.
To the extent that I have any authority at all, I would ask you to.
I'm going to, yeah.
You know?
Honestly, it was the toughest decision I had to make in my life.
Absolutely.
I wanted you guys to understand, because I knew this was coming, how serious I take it.
No, I understand that. I understand that, but, you know, again, we really need to, I think, keep sight of this type of an exercise as opposed to a criminal investigation, which we've had those, and we've had criminal acts. That's a whole different environment, you know, then it really comes into punitive measure. I don't see this as that. So, you know, I want to, you know, you know, I don't want you to leave here without you knowing that I had no records on you at all, which is a very good thing, and that, you know, from my point of view, I think it's one of the best restaurants in the town, and you run a great business. Great business. So with that, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we issue a letter of warning to Prezo's Bar and Grill and not vote to suspend or revoke or modify the license in any way.
Okay, now, that motion would be in violation of rules and regulations that this board adopted against my vote in October of 2013. Are you prepared to do that?
Would you like to make a motion to suspend or modify the license?
These are regulations that are put into place. I just want the board to realize what we're going to do. I have no problem, but do you guys want to make sure? Okay. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. So motion has been made and seconded to issue a warning. Is there any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So good luck, and...
Thank you.
Give Rachel a call, will you?
Right now.
All right. Oh, thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks. Are you here on behalf of Saber Latino?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you come on up? Okay. Yes, this is a application to transfer a common victual license to Francis Samiento, DBA Saber Latino Restaurant, 126 Main Street. The license application is for common victual license. The department head review form indicates that it is an allowable use in the zone, not handicap accessible. The town planner has indicated there's no change of actual use. The tax collector and the town treasurer indicate there are no outstanding taxes or no liens, and the fire chief and the police chief have no issues or concerns. So with that, are you Mr. Samiento?
No, it's my friend. I don't know what happened. Was with me.
Did you get lost on the way in?
Yeah, I don't know. He's gone quickly.
Okay. Is he, do you expect him to be here or...
Yeah, it's supposed to.
Oh, do you want to wait until he gets here?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I mean, we've got other stuff to do. You can sit back, and when he gets here, just flag, and we'll pull you up and do it. Is that okay?
When you're ready.
I'm okay, so just...
Yeah, you're fine. We can go on to other business.
All right.
No, I'm saying, if Mr. Samiento is planning on coming, then we'll wait for him.
All right.
If that's all right. Okay. Why don't you have a seat, and then when he comes in, just let me know.
All right.
Okay, all right, so we'll keep that on tap. Now, let's see, we do have interviews scheduled for the treasurer position, but they're looking to start at 7:35 PM, so why don't we look to run out the clock a little bit? Rick, what do you got for town administrators' report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to report on the Louisa Lake weed control treatment. The aquatic control technology performed the initial weed control treatment at Louisa Lake on June 12th. The contact herbicide was applied to approximately 12 to 15 acres of the southern portion of the pond. The target plants have now begun to sink to the bottom of the pond, and they are reacting favorably. I want to report on the Neighborhood Task Force webpage. The webpage site will be operational on Wednesday, July 1st of this week. We will monitor the site and review complaints that are filed. The telephone call in-line will also be operational. I want to remind everyone that the fireworks show will be on Friday, July 3rd. Fireworks will commence at 10:00 PM. Once again, this year, the Milford Lions Club will be running a concession stand. They will also have a DJ at the event. And finally, in your informational correspondence tonight, you'll see a sample of the new tax bill format. Tax collector Derry Dias has informed me that the new tax bills will be mailed July 1st, and I want to thank her for her efforts in handling that matter. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any questions, comments? Bill?
No, no questions.
Will?
No. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Going on to old business, I wanted to kind of take care of a couple of housekeeping matters before we get on to the summer months. And on the agenda is the Personnel Board's request for a representative from this board to work with them on their revised Article II. And then if you recall, at the, I believe it was at the last meeting, I had sent a, circulated a memo about changing the capital planning process with Representative the Fincom and the Capital Improvement Committee, and also looking for a member of this board to serve on that. So I would be inclined, given Will's experience on the Fincom, to appoint Will to the capital planning process representative, and then considering Bill's experience, put him as a representative with the Personnel Board. So I'd like to make those two appointments. If you could notify both of those boards, and then they'll be in touch with you to get something going on there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just, you know, I haven't had the opportunity to review the memos yet, just received these just prior to this meeting. You know, and my, right now, my schedule is such with work, I'm cautious to take on another, another subcommittee, given some of the other things with Middle School East and certainly the Woodland School Project and some of the other things that we have going on, and also I just got on the one for, to look at our districting lines and where we vote. So I'd be reluctant to do that, because I want to be able to give it the full attention. I want to be able to give it the time required, and I'm not sure I can do that right now. I can, I can talk to you later if you like, or get back to you at the next meeting, but I'm not able to do that at this time. I just want to be able to make a commitment, and if I can make the commitment, I want to be able to give it my 100% attention.
Okay. Hearing that, then I will be appointing Will to both be the liaison with the Personnel Board and also with the Finance Committee Subcommittee, working on the capital planning The next item is going to be off the list. This was a proposed order of taking for construction easements for the Godfrey Brook project, but I was informed today by town council and town engineer that there needs to be some changes to the legal descriptions, so that's going to be revised, and we'll probably be looking at that at our next meeting. Bill, do you have any old business?
I do not.
Will?
No, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we have new business. We have a request for an appointment on the Commission on Disability from Harold Rhodes. He has received the talent application form from a Teresa Gracifa, who was an HR manager at Milton Katz, and he would ask that we appoint her to the MCOD. Is there a motion?
Let's see, she's a Milford resident, and I would be happy to make that appointment.
Seconded.
Or a motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have a reappointment to the Retirement Board. This is the notice from Alberta Farley, the retirement administrator, seeking to have Michael DiOrio reappointed as a member.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Michael DiOrio as a member of the Retirement Board. Oh, it's actually not ours, right? It is a Selectman appointee, yes?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to make that motion then.
Seconded.
That'd be ours. If not, we shouldn't have it on the agenda.
Oh, it's ours.
Motion made and seconded. If not, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. And the Macagano Club looking for an all-alcoholic license for July 3rd, 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM in the parking lot for the 4th of July fireworks.
Move? Seconded.
Motion made, seconded. Gladly vote for that. That's unanimous. Bill, do you have any new, oh, I'm sorry. I also have a gift from the Italian-American War Veterans, $2,500, and it looks like it just goes to the Town's General Fund. There's no written direction about the usage of it. Is there a motion to accept?
Yeah, we'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to graciously accept the very kind, generous gift from the Italian War Veterans.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. And let's see, is Mr. Samiento here yet, or? No? Okay.
Difficult.
Yeah, yeah, see if you can get a hold of him. Because we're running out of things to do here. Okay, so let's see, on our package of information, let's see, you have the memorandum that I just drafted today, and it's in response to Lena McCarthy's request to me regarding the signed bylaw, and you can read what I have sent back to them. She was thinking that maybe a joint meeting might be productive, but as I indicated to her, you know, I think it's clear that the signed zoning bylaw has been problematic for quite some time. I have a memo of Larry Duncan's evaluation back in 2009, so I suggested... I have a memo of Larry Duncan's evaluation back in 2009, so I suggested that the Planning Board start the process to draft a comprehensive signed bylaw, and as with any zoning bylaw, it will pass through our board onto a public hearing process, and that's the way all zoning is handled. I don't see any reason to do this differently. Also, it should be in both of your boxes. Town Council did an excellent analysis of the recent Supreme Court case, Reed versus Arizona, which really dissected what communities can do or not do with signed bylaws. So, I gave her and the Planning Board some information as to where to start, and hopefully they'll spearhead that process. We also have a memo that I think Rick got today from Mike Brishani, POC's Director, which was in response to, I believe, some of Will's questions, maybe Bill's questions as well, and if there's any more information needed, we can request, or if not, we can put it on for a future agenda item. But we just got that today as well. And also in our box was a report from Worldband about domains, audit, data closets, and access. And I read this report, and, you know, it just really confirms my, my thoughts, and I, I, I hope the media will pay particular attention to this. The Town of Milford Municipal does not have a technology problem. The Town of Milford School Department has a technology problem, and, you know, as I looked at the various municipal buildings, probably the worst thing you could say is that the Highway Department, you know, the door wasn't locked, and the phone system is old, and the, and the room is dusty. Other than that, every one of the municipal buildings are in very good shape, and I, I was disappointed to read particularly the Brookside School, which I think is our newest school. I, I don't remember exactly when that went online, but, you know, it, it talks about this, and I'll just read some of it. You know, it's located in the main hall and the right past the Administration Office. The room is generally locked, but was not locked during this review. The closet is climate-controlled. It has a rack system, however, is in disarray. The servers are not mounted properly and are piled on top of one another. There are four UPS units in this closet. Three of them are in the alarm state. The door lock system, which is different from any other school, is on an outdated Dell laptop running Windows XP Home Edition. The server is running Windows Server 2008 with Windows Server 2008 and 2003 VMs. There is another computer running Windows Server 2000, which is part of the phone system. It's being used to store things such as CRTVs, smartboards, gym equipment, and other things unrelated to IT. The amount of items made it hard to move around or even work on the racks. The IDF is located in the gym closet, enclosed in an unlocked cabinet. The room is filled with gym equipment and one file cabinet. The file cabinet is located in front of the rack, which made it inaccessible. The gym closet is extremely warm. And, you know, the other schools are just like this, so, you know, I, I don't know that this is so much a technology issue. This is a management issue, and Brookside's one of our newest schools. To, to hear that it's in that kind of shape just cries out for better organization, better management, and, you know, this, this whole report is like that. So, you know, hopefully, we'll, we'll get something from the schools, but, you know, they've really got to take better care of what's there and, and be better organized. I don't know what's been going on for, for the last few years in the school department, but just reading this report here, I, you know, I, I found it, you know, very, very shocking.
Mr. Chairman, if you...
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, the, the report also troubled me a great deal. What it, what it indicated to me is a serious lack of attention by the people who are managing that hardware and those servers. It's troubling. And to be honest with you, if the school system wanted to pursue a separate management process for their IT, I heard Mr. Trembley talk about going external, I wouldn't be adverse to that because what the town has to do is make sure that the town's IT system is up and running. It's, it's not going to run well when the connections to the school system and the payroll systems and the enterprise software are not connected well, but we also can't let the school system drag down the town's systems. We've already had payroll challenges. Those challenges resulted in people having to stay late to cut checks. But it shouldn't be lost at all either that part of the management of the, the resources that have been allocated have been managed through Town Hall. So, I view the process that we've been using as flawed, and I, I would say that I'm, I have some indirect responsibility as a member of this board, but I'm committed to fixing it. I don't think we should continue a partnership with the, with the school system, given their, the reports that I've read and the fact that it's been so neglected for so long. Granted, we've been through some IT directors, but there's, these problems started well over ten years ago.
Oh, absolutely.
They were created yesterday, and they weren't in the last four years. I'd like to, I'd like to still consider and discuss what the model is, but I can tell you right now, I'm prepared to make a motion that, that Mr. Vilani and Bob Trembley get together and work with the school department to see how we can break up the IT. Maybe it can be in small, manageable bites, and maybe it's more likely to be successful then. It seems as though, Mr. Chairman, I'll give you my biggest level of disappointment at this point. We've asked for an update from Bob Trembley. We've asked for an update from Rick Vilani as to what the proposal is, what type of management structure, and instead, I hear Mr. Trembley on the radio talking about outsourcing it before this board or anybody else has seen anything. So, if people want a cowboy, people want to go out on their own, that's fine. You know, you can't save people from themselves by statute. They're responsible for that school system. They're responsible for that budget, and that school committee is ultimately responsible for how that's managed. The only caution I would have for the school department is, and you've lived it as well, Brian, when you solely outsource and you have nobody responsible for the subcontractors, we've been in that model with subcontractors before with HVAC, with plumbing, with electrical, and I want to tell you, I'd be very cautious about that approach, but if they want to do that, there's no saving them from themselves.
Yeah. Will, I didn't know if you had a chance to look at that. It was in the box, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it's actually on my desk at work because I read it going into the train this morning. First, I want to acknowledge Worldband and Lonnie Tinio specifically because they did a good job. It was a good report. It was concise. It wasn't long-winded. It got right to the point, and I think that's what I was looking for when I requested some of this audit stuff, and, you know, a lot of us ask questions we already know the answers to, and though this stuff has been happening for, for quite a long time, over the last few years, at least having these IT discussions, these things have now come to light. So, I think it is on the school system, and I think they know that as well, that they, they have a lot to handle, and I, I do believe that it's probably best to be handled by them. Again, I've said this over the last couple of meetings, that both you, Mr. Chairman, and Bill have, have been dealing with this for some time. I'm already frustrated, and it's only been a short time between the Fincom and, and here sitting with you gentlemen. So, I think that's probably something we need to seriously think about, and I think if, I certainly support Bill's suggestion that, you know, Rick and Bob figure out how to, how to go their separate ways, I suppose. It's very disappointing because that was a goal that obviously seemed like everyone wanted to, wanted to see achieved, but I certainly don't have to echo what you've both said in the past, but I think probably moving ahead and at least continuing to improve the municipal side for, you know, even though that's not without anything great at stake here because the town side does seem to be in pretty good shape. So, I think it's just a matter of improving and, and adding more. I know, you know, we talked about earlier about the website and the phone call. I mean, you know, we, we got to get to a point, and not to pile on, but we got to get to a point where when someone make, is on the, on our website and does complain about a park, that if it's an email, that email thread is actually followed. This email was sent to Mike Brishani. It was opened at this time. It was then this. It was closed. I mean, the city of Boston, with millions of people, do that. It's a great website. You go on there, you follow the track. A resident puts something online, it's followed all the way to closure. It's just, it's an amazing thing that these giant cities are doing. We should be able to do that, but obviously, we can't even move to some of the things I want to do or see if we are still dealing with this stuff that's, you know, should have been dealt with a decade ago.
Well, I mean, I just brought it up because, like you said, I do, I agree with you in the sense I think Worldband did a nice job with this report, you know, was something that I could read and understand, which is not always the case when I deal with technology. But, you know, again, it's just really just, you know, just a management issue. I mean, don't let your schools get like that. I mean, some of these, and, and Brookside was probably one of the better ones. I mean, Woodland, it's located next to the girls' bathroom, just past the library. It's suggested to knock first as it may be occupied. I mean, you know, it's a management issue at this point, so they've really got to kind of get their act together, what's, what's going on there. So, with that, let's move on. Mr. Samiento, is it? Yeah, why don't you come on up? Sure. How are you?
I'm fine.
Good. Have a seat. Have a seat. Have a seat. So, what we have before us is a application to transfer a common victual license to Francis Samiento, DBA Sabo Latino Restaurant at 126 Main Street. Before you were here, I read off the Town Department Head Review, which is all positive, and you're looking again for a transfer of the common victual license. Looks like you're talking about hours of operation Monday through Thursday, six to ten PM, Friday through Saturday, six to eleven, Sunday, six to ten. So, with that, is there anything you'd like to tell us about this?
Yes.
Are you going to open a restaurant there?
Yes.
Yeah, or take over the existing one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, good. Any questions from the board?
No questions from me, Mr. Jim.
Well?
No, I'm all, I'm all set as well.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'd move to approve.
Motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Did a great job.
Thank you very much.
A man of few words. That's the way to do it. You're all set, so just touch base with the Selectmen's Office tomorrow, and they'll process the paperwork for you.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
All right, are we ready to start the interviews for Town Treasurer? The first one we have listed is Brian Guzman. Is Brian here? Brian, why don't you come on up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let me just see what we have. Just bear with me one second. So, we have a memorandum from Rick indicating that the position of Town Treasurer was advertised in the Beacon on May first, in the Milford Daily News on May first, the Town Crya on April 24th. Notice was also posted on the Beacon website as well as the Town website. We received eight applications. The Finance Director and the Town Administrator interviewed five individuals, and of the five individuals, we have three, three recommendations for interview coming before us tonight. Brian Guzman, am I saying your name?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Brian Guzman, Elizabeth LeBlanc, and Christopher Pillar. And for Brian, we have your resume before us, and also, it looks like the, well, just the, just the ad response. So, with that, we'll turn it over to you. Take as much time as you'd like. Tell us whatever you think we ought to know about you, and then we'll open it up to the board for questions.
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you for taking the time to interview me today for the Town Treasurer position. I applied because I wanted to give back to the community. After working for 12 years in public accounting and private organizations, I recently separated with EMC, which is my last organization, and it's during this time in my career where I said, where do I want to go? What do I want to do? And what makes me feel good? When I saw the Town Treasurer opened up here, I applied for it, being the Vice Chairman of the Menden Finance Committee. It's something that I understand, something that I like doing, and with the change in organization, specifically after meeting with Zach and Richard themselves, I believed that I'd be a good candidate to manage the cash flow activities of the town. With that, I live in, I live in Menden, so it's, it's three miles away, which is a, a nice commute, and also, it's, I feel like I could be a good asset to the Town of Milford.
Okay. Want to turn it over? Bill?
Yeah, what was your separation day with EMC?
Separation day was in March, March 19th, and I had to pay continuation until mid-May.
Thank you. I'm just looking at your resume, and one of the things that struck me I wanted to ask about is the process you used. So, you listed some experience, and you talked about capital and operating expense models for new strategic initiatives.
Sure.
I wonder if you could just elaborate on that?
Sure. So, on top of run rate budgeting, which is typically what the organization does, there is strategic initiatives, specifically in cloud, security, and big data, where we would take investment dollars that was given from the CFO and place them into headcount and operating activities to... EMC has fundamentally changed the way that they market their activities. It used to be million-dollar data storage boxes on posters, and now it's how can we transform your organization to bring them to the cloud? How does big data work for you? What does that mean with marketing? So, with that, we are giving a, a separate parcel of money to work directly with the, to Vice President, who is in charge of those operations, to financially model out and quarterize the dollars to move those needle-moving activities forward.
Is that new product introduction, new, new feature sets?
Solutions. It's global solutions, so taking all of the different business units and the capabilities of the organization, combining that together, and marketing, how can we transform your organization with professional services and with the, with the data boxes as opposed to just individually selling a product?
And what was your role in that specifically?
In finance, what I would do is I would take the dollars that was given out from the CFO, and I would work with the two Vice Presidents to quarterize out the dollars in regards to timing of headcount and also managing the pro, the program marketing dollars. So, and go over through procurement, read contracts, understand, and work with the Vice Presidents, their directs, to put the numbers in the system and forecast and close the books.
Okay. What is it out of your transferable skills that you think uniquely qualifies you for the job of Treasurer? I understand your accounting background.
Sure.
It doesn't always translate for a lot of accountants. It's not going to necessarily translate into a treasurer's position, but how does your experience get you there in your mind?
My experience gets me there because when I started with Ernst &amp; Young, I was an accountant, and I worked in the accounting industry. When I worked for Moody's Investor Services, I was in the bond rating industry, and I was able to perform as a, as a finance analyst there. And then also with Softscape, that was a startup, and with EMC, that's high-tech. I think that my transferable skills is the availability to learn within hiring and interviewing for jobs. We've never hired candidates that has had that exact same position beforehand. We've always hired candidates with the ability to learn in order to understand where the organization is going in the future. Looking, and after talking with Zach about the way that he wants to make his department more cohesive, I feel that my, my experience and my personality can be of value to that.
Right, and just one last question. Can you, can you tell me what you know and how you would best describe the role of Treasurer on day-to-day and month-to-month duties?
Sure. The way that I view it is managing the town's cash flow activities from payroll to W2 withholding to understanding when the dollars come in and how they're being expensed out.
Okay, and what about some of the ancillary responsibilities that are quite significant about, you know, bonding dollars and favorable interest rates and whatnot?
Sure. Working with Moody's Investor Services gave me the experience that, sitting down with Zach, I understand about the bond rating for the funding of the new school, and that one of the things that Zach said that would help out within the first ninety days of the job was to model out the bond ratings, to understand what the favorable interests are, what the weighted average cost of capital is for the town now, and what would be most favorable to fund the school.
And I said it was the last one, but I'll try one more. What was your impression of the Moody's Investor rating that was applied to Milford that they gave Milford?
Impressive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Will?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking at the resumes of the three candidates that we're going to be interviewing today. It's not a question of qualifications and, and background and certainly education. My question's anyway are going to be directed to all three candidates. Is your experience as a manager and as a supervisor and what that experience obviously Is your experience as a manager and as a supervisor and what that experience obviously is? And how you plan to manage and supervise your staff, as well as working cohesively in a, in a town hall made up of different, you know, different offices, different departments, different department heads, different fiefdoms, reporting to different elected boards and things of that nature. So I'll just go back, because I threw a lot at you in a few seconds. But if you can just give me your experience on supervising the staff, how many people that has, that has been? And how you describe yourself as a manager?
Sure. My experience as a supervisor with Softscape was positive. I had to wear many different hats because it was a small mom-and-pop shop organization. With that, I was managing a credit and collections and a billing analyst, or a team of two with matrix reports from the accounting department. What I believe is that people are subject matter experts in what they do. I think that what qualifies me as a candidate to come in is to take the job from the ground up as opposed to from tops down, understand what the expertise of the employees are, get trained on the systems, and work with them as an auxiliary part to say, well, if you're gonna be out and a cut, a check needs to be cut, I'll be able to do that for you, right? Working with people, I've always believed that in order to provide a cohesive environment, it doesn't come down to yes and no, or do this or do that. It really is, for me, become understanding the values, the attributes, the beliefs, and the expectations of the people that you work with, because that varies from person to person. To understand the person and what's important to them has always been situational leadership for me. And understanding what, what the employee wants to do with their career, how they've gotten to where they are and what they want to do, and how can I be supportive of that? I've always been more of a democratic manager in regards to taking a poll or asking people, what do they think is best for the organization? However, ultimately, within the town's treasurer position, I believe that any decision must be made from the finance director that would be what's good for the town. So working with the employees to get that decision made.
Great. That's all I have.
So you feel you've got enough experience to step into the municipal setting?
Yes.
How would you gauge questions of bonding in terms of timing, relationship to the town's budgets? How would you look to handle a particular capital project at any time?
Sure. So the first thing I would do is get a level of understanding within working with the bond rating companies to figure out the finite details in order to explain that and understand it. Understand what the cost of capital is and the timing of the expenses for the town. Be able to, to communicate to the public how the town is able to afford that and where the revenue is coming in in order to manage the bond rating expense. However, I do believe that it is a learning process of understanding the details behind the contract.
Now, if you go through that process and you have a particular belief or view, and that view or belief may conflict with the finance director, how would you handle that situation?
I would voice my opinion. Everybody's entitled to their opinion and everybody's entitled to be wrong. Those are two things that I've learned throughout my career. I believe that as long as we're on an understanding of where the different expectations or beliefs are, that is the difference, that's fine, because if everyone just agreed and said yes to each other, then we wouldn't be where we are today.
Okay, so, run that through me again. So, so how would you handle that situation?
I would do my research. I would back up with what my belief was or my view to my opinion. I would sit down with the finance director. I would voice that opinion. Ultimately, the finance director is calling the shots, and I would try to understand what the difference in opinions is.
Other experience that you've had at the municipal level, anything with tax title, collections, anything like that?
Not on the municipality level, because I've worked in public and private organizations before.
Yep.
So your answer to that is no.
Okay. Do you feel that that's something that's attainable in terms of learning about, or do you think it's?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I get easily excited by new projects, which is why this job is appealing to me. I feel that it will keep me busy and active and keep me engaged within the town and its finances. So I look forward to learning those things quickly.
Okay, and you would have a certain amount of staff underneath you? How would you feel about that?
Good. I'm at a position in my career now where I'm looking to manage a small staff. I'm not ready to jump into a position of managing a large department. And after talking with some of the persons that I've previously worked with, they said, Brian, your next role should really be managing a small finance team. I'm overqualified for a lot of the senior financial analyst jobs, and I'm underqualified for a lot of the senior controller jobs, which is why this job is appealing to me at my career level right now.
Okay, great. Is there anything else, Bill?
No, just noting some application knowledge and system-wide ERP systems is, there's a lot of similarity there. I can see why you made it through this process. I know that the interview with, I talked to the town accountant and finance director today, and he said it was a couple-hour process, so...
Sure.
I know why you're here, and I know why Rick and Zach sent you to us. I appreciate the candor which you answered, and I'm clear, I don't need anything more.
Uh, Will?
No? No, I'm good. Thank you.
You have the last word.
Thank you very much for your time today. If you have any questions, concerns, or need reference material between anything that I can provide to you, please reach out, and I'll be more than happy to provide that.
Very good.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good meeting you, Brian.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, it's almost eight o'clock, but the next one is Chris Pillar. Christopher? Yeah, why don't you come on up? We'll get started early. So I think you were here when I basically read off the background in terms of the advertising. There were a number of people who applied, also a number of people who were interviewed. And you were one of three finalists recommended by the finance director and the town administrator for a interview before us. So with that, let me turn it over to you.
First of all, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. For the selectmen, thank you. Ms. Vani, thank you. Zach, if he was here, thank him too. I'm at a point in my career where I'm looking for a long-term career. I feel like the town of Milford at the treasurer's position would be a great fit. Born and raised in Milford, always looking to give back to the community. Currently serve on the Milford Auxiliary Police, going on eight years now. With my volunteer services, I do have a full-time job as a controller for a manufacturing company outside of Worcester. At that company, I handle all the finances. I report to a CFO, a CEO. Always managing the cash daily, collections, AP, payroll, payroll taxes, sales taxes. Manage a staff of four currently. Previous role, I had a staff of five, doing the same thing for a construction company. I was a controller in East Providence. There, I managed all the cash. We had an in-house payroll system. Manage all the payroll taxes as well, and all the sales taxes and bonuses for the employees. I graduated Northeastern, so I've been out of school for eight years now. Just looking for a path where eventually I could become a CFO. It's always been a goal.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Bill, questions?
Yeah, I noted that you're also enrolled in the Masters of Business program?
Yep. Yep, I started that last July at Assumption College. I've got about another year left, year and a half left.
That's impressive. I'm also, at benefit of the grades you provided, very impressive as well. You know, I'll ask some of the same questions. There's, there's not a lot of positions in the private sector that might perfectly prepare someone for a treasurer. But there are a lot of transferable skills, and I'd, I'd ask you to, in your investigation, looking into the treasurer's position and thinking about your background, what you think some of those are that make you uniquely qualified?
Well, main functions of the treasurer's position for the town was the W's, was payroll, W-2's, debt service, and cash management. Through my experiences in the private sector, I've managed all those. I had the experience to physically do the payrolls at Arden for two years while I was there. Before, there was human resource responsibilities, insurance responsibilities. At Arden, I did have that satisfaction of, an experience of doing those tasks along with the CFO. We didn't have an HR department, so a lot of it fell on myself and him. Currently at Dexter, we have an HR department, so a lot of the insurance and benefits are pushed off to them.
Okay. Why don't you describe to me the best of your ability, what you think the treasurer's role is? That would help me understand, you know, what your preparation for tonight.
The treasurer's role is, its main function is basically protecting the town's cash. Make sure it's invested in the proper securities to earn the amount of money and interest and other aspects. To collect outstanding taxes from the people and manage it through the AP and AR system. Also to do budgets, to make sure all departments are online for budgets. And always to come under budget would be a great, significant...
So that would be the reconciliation process?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, you know, what's your view? I know you had a two-hour meeting with Zach as well and Rick. What's your view of the town's current cash position and its current debt structure?
The cash position's very strong, in my opinion. Going back a couple of years now, it's been very strong. Obviously, the new person coming in, their goal was to keep it the way it is, if not make it better.
Okay.
Debt, I know there's capital projects out there. I know there's going to be more capital projects coming. The best way to handle those projects is to just manage the cash flow well. Make sure that there's always enough cash to pay the debts down and project out for that debt.
All right, last question, Mr. Chairman. Would you, would you consider yourself fiscally conservative? Would you, how would you characterize, you know, because you're dealing with other people's money in this case, right? And you're used to that, you're dealing with other people's money in a corporation. It's a little bit different in a public entity, but how would you characterize your...
I would, well, I'd like to, usually when I go on interviews, I like to tell people that I would treat the town's money like it was my own money. Very conservative with it, not gonna jump into anything without knowing all the facts. Not gonna sign off on anything without knowing all the facts. Same in my company now. Someone comes with a large expense, I'll do my research before I give my okay on it, before I send it up to the CFO for final approval.
Okay. I don't have anything more, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, you were sitting in the room when I asked the last candidate. I figured there'd be some technical questions about the position. I figured it'd be some HR questions. So I really just wanted to concentrate on your management style and your experience supervising people. I know you had kind of mentioned, I'm sorry, you didn't kind of mention, you did mention that in the past you've managed a staff up to five and currently you're managing four. Can you just talk a little bit about that? How you consider yourself, how you, how you manage people, how you interact with the staff? You know, how you deliver, you know, work that needs to be done or things that need to take place?
So first off, I would always treat my staff with respect and any other department staff with respect. That's a big key between a manager and a support is respect. If they don't respect you, they're not going to want to work for you. If you don't respect them, you're gonna always find ways to find fault. So respect is a big thing. Also motivation. Motivating them and wanting them to come to work every day is a huge part. That way you feel comfortable handing them work and you can trust and have confidence in that work. I have a staff of four now that I get along with very well. Always comfortable if I'm out one day that the department's gonna run. There's nothing that's gonna go major, majorly wrong. I'm a team player. I'm not afraid to roll up my sleeves and get into the everyday work. You know, I always use the term, just because I sit in an office doesn't mean I'm too good to get down into the everyday tasks. If someone's up, I'm a big fan of being a team player and picking up the slack. I feel like a manager should always know what their employees do on a daily basis, so that way if something in an emergency situation does happen, you can step up and keep the department running.
Chris, I actually want to interrupt you right there, because being a public employee for over 20 years, you just hit the nail on the head when it comes to knowing what other people are doing, your staff as well as even people that you work for. Because again, in municipalities as well as in state government, people get very protective of what they do and they're very territorial. And I don't know if that's necessarily common in the private sector, but I'm really happy you said that because, and I wanted to acknowledge that, because you may have seen my face actually react. Because that's a very hard part, and I don't, and I don't know if that's something you're gonna experience here, but I'm just speaking out of my own personal experiences that that is invaluable. Because we, you know, at the T now, we have an expression about, hey, if I get hit by a bus tomorrow, who's gonna come in and be able to handle all your responsibilities or at least not fall behind? And in a lot of offices throughout state and town, people really get territorial. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. I think that was, that was a huge point, and I hope I didn't throw you off, off track here by interrupting you. But that, that was a key point anyway to me, that that's very important, even if you're managing three people, you're managing 33 people. So I appreciate that.
I hope it's not an MBTA bus you're talking about, the bitch you carry.
Just the last thing about managing, I'm always caring about my employees' future. I'm a big fan of employee growth through an organization, whether it's with a municipality or a private company. If they always have career goals to look forward to, it motivates them and it makes them want to be a part of something or the organization.
How do you deal with, or how have you dealt with, or, you know, maybe you, maybe you haven't, and then I guess I'd be jealous, conflicts, differences of opinion with staff, you know? You know, you want to, I guess I'm just looking for something specific along the lines of, you know, this is the conflict, this is how we resolved it, this is how I, how I react to certain things. I started managing people at 22 years old, and I had a staff of about 12, and it was a tough learning curve. But you have to be respectful, you have to, but you also have to be the boss. So I just didn't know if you had any experience about anything like that.
Actually, when I took the controller role at Arden after I left Consigliere, that was my first management role. I walked into a very small accounting department. They had a previous controller who was there for 40 years and she was retiring. And the accounting department was broken. She had her favorites. She made it known who her favorites were. So one of my main goals was to come in and to get the accounting department back to, back together, back to being a team. So what I did is I sat down each of my employees, heard what they had to say, heard what areas that could get fixed and become stronger, and the areas that they wanted to improve on. And then I brought them all in as a group and basically just said, this is a company. We're not here to be friends. If you are friends, that's a plus, but you need to be professional, and we need to get the job done. Our number one focus is the company and the production of the company. About a year later, they were all back to being a team again. They were always communicating. Some of them were taking walks at lunch together. And when I actually left the accounting department, all four of them came to us and said, you know, you made the department a lot better place than it was before, and we thank you. So that was my first experience and probably the toughest one I've had to have so far.
Thank you.
What's up? Chris, certification, State Treasurers Association, how do you view that? Do you think that's gonna be a problem?
Oh, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. Between my experiences now and my MBA, I think I'll have more than enough knowledge and experience to pass that.
How long does that process take, do you know, the certification process?
A year, understanding about a year.
Yeah. Because I think that's going to be important. Well, it's actually gonna be a requirement, but in retrospect, it's probably something that we should have wrapped into the, the application at this point even more than we did.
Mr. Chairman, it's like a two-summer program, isn't it? Mr. Chairman, it's like a two-year summer program, isn't it? UMass Amherst used to offer it. Is that the same?
I don't know. I don't know.
I believe that's what it is. I think the Tax Collector, I think Terry had to do that.
She did.
And then once the Town Treasurer, I think it's a two, like it's over a year period, but it's like two four-week
Yeah.
sessions at. At UMass Amherst, I know because I used to work them. They used to do that. I don't know if that's still the case, but I know it's not a whole year of study.
So you understand that that would be one of the requirements?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable going after it. I'm never one to back down from a challenge. So even in the beginning, if it is difficult for me, I'm going to study. I'm going to pass it. And I'll do everything in my power to get through it.
And I'm sure you realize that, you know, with the projects typically that the town of Milford has on the table, long-term debt is a huge issue, bonding, timing of issuing bonds. Our prior Town Treasurer, Bob Rozier, was excellent in terms of timing and also what I would consider refinancing and saving some interest. How active would you envision yourself being in that area?
I'd be extremely active in that area. One of the goal of a controller now is to always save the company money. So if there's always an opportunity where you can lower the interest or you can save on interest payments, that'd be a huge gain for the town. So I would always be paying attention to the schedules to make sure that we're on track or we're going to be early. And if there is any opportunity for a refinance, that we jump on it, or I'll recommend to Zach that we jump on it quickly.
And I asked the previous person there, what if, you know, and I'll ask you the same, what if your views differ from the finance director? How would you handle that scenario?
Like the previous candidate said, everybody's entitled to their own opinions. However, just because we have different opinions, we shouldn't stray off the path that we have to do what's right for the town or the company. We always have to act in the best interest for the town. So whether I like it or not, or Zach likes it or not, it's whatever's better for the town and you just have to put your personal feelings aside.
So how would you try to convince Zach that your point of view is better for the town than his?
I would do a lot of research, have a lot of paperwork and a lot of data to support my opinion and I would present it in a very professional way to him and show him the positives and the negatives from going with my opinion and also break it out to the positives and negatives of his opinion to show and compare and contrast those opinions.
You served on the zoning board.
Yes.
Yeah. I didn't see it on your resume though.
I did not, didn't put it on my resume.
Yeah, yeah, because you were on for.
Many years as an alternate.
Yeah, and then you moved, I think.
Yep, I moved to Oxbridge and I'm currently in Whiteman's.
Okay, yeah, yeah, because I saw that and I remember. Okay, good. I'm all set. You have anything else, Bill?
No, no. I thought you did a great job and appreciate, I'm glad that you were comfortable while you were going through this. At least you looked comfortable and that's what we want to see from each of the candidates, a certain level of comfort that you handled yourself well.
Will?
I'm all set. Thank you.
You have the last word.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, whether good or bad. It's been an experience and I want to thank the three of you. I want to thank Mr. Valani and Mr. Taylor for their experience, their knowledge and their wisdom for this position.
All right. Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
We have one other.
Fifteen minutes.
Yeah, yeah, we have one other candidate scheduled. It's for eight thirty-five. So we're running ahead of schedule.
Usually it's going to go forty-five minutes.
Which is admirable, an admirable attribute, except when you have nothing else to do. So why don't we take a brief recess? And when the third candidate comes, we can re-adjourn. Is that okay, Dan?
Yep.
Okay. We'll just take a recess and then we can put it back on.